Good evening, Chair. Calls order, the Board of Health update. And if I may, Ms. Levy, thanks for coming today. Ms. Robert will be a few minutes late, but she's definitely on her way, so whenever you're ready to start.
Wonderful. Can y'all hear me okay?
Pull it in there. There you go.
Closer. Is that better?
That's much better.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to meet with you all this evening to provide the Board of Health update. I've now been in the role of health officer for a little over two months, and it has been a very busy and wonderful two months. I've spent the bulk of this time getting to know the amazing team at the Hartford County Health Department. A number of folks have joined us this evening. And it's really been a wonderful opportunity to learn, to get to know their programs, and hear their ideas for how we can better serve our community. And I've also started meeting with the Health Department's many wonderful community partners, and I want to thank each of you for taking the time to meet with me and sharing your thoughts on how to best address health concerns in Hartford County. So, we have a fairly packed agenda, and we'll really only be scratching the surface of the great work that's happening. But our team has put together packets for each of you with a number of materials that we'll be referencing this evening, including a copy of the slides, our annual report for fiscal year 25, as well as some flyers for upcoming events. So, I wanted to share some data related to our many services and programs. You have this data snapshot in your packet, so I'm not going to review every single detail from these. But the thing I really want to emphasize as I go through these slides is the numbers that you see in that report are the result of the hard work of an incredible team of public health professionals at the Health Department. And so, you see here are some data points from our Bureau of Administration. The administration team provides the strong foundation for all of the work that we do at the Health Department. And I've included here some pictures of our vital records and M-CHIP teams. Both of these programs are critical initial access points for members of our community. You see over seventeen thousand certificates issued by our vital records team. They are an initial access point. My office is across the hallway from them. I see that steady flow of people who come in and they provide incredible customer service to the people in the community, getting the documents they need to obtain additional services. And our M-CHIP team, who are able to enroll folks in health insurance and help them get access to health care. Next up is our Bureau of Behavioral Health, led by Andrea Paffes. In FY25, our behavioral health team provided over thirteen thousand mental health and substance use disorder-related services to Hartford County residents. That's an incredible number. One of the things we've also been talking about is the importance of celebrating success. And I've included here a slide that was recently presented at the overdose prevention team meeting that shows a forty-seven percent decrease in fatal overdoses for the first seven months of 2025 versus the first seven months of 2024. That's a testament to the community partnerships and the many dedicated individuals who work to address SUD and overdose in Hartford County, including our Health Department team. Our Care Coordination Bureau plays an important role in getting people connected to resources. I want to publicly thank Kim Proudt, who recently retired from her role as the Director of the Care Coordination Bureau. I've heard from so many partners about Kim's dedication and tireless commitment to serving some of the most vulnerable members of our community. And I'm thrilled that Pam R. Chappie, who has graciously agreed to serve as Acting Director, she is currently the Supervisor for our Acute Care Coordination Unit. So she will serve as Acting Director while recruitment gets underway. So our clinical health staff, some of whom are here this evening, I really want to take this opportunity to thank them publicly as well for the incredible work that they have been doing over the past several months. August and September are a very busy time in our clinic as they work to get kids up to date on their back-to-school immunizations. And that team has just done an incredible job getting kids caught up to date. And, you know, everyone on that team, the people who serve our clients from the moment they walk in the door, call on the phone, they do a tremendous job, and I'm so grateful for their hard work. Our Environmental Health Bureau plays such an important role in protecting public health, but are often the unsung heroes. You can see from the numbers presented here that this is indeed a busy team. Having gone through a critical staffing shortage in environmental health in my prior role, I'm so appreciative of the county's investment in our environmental health workforce. Our Family Health Team does such great work, from the dental team, who ensures the oral health of so many in our community, to our Medicaid transportation team, who arranged more than twenty-five thousand transports in fiscal year 25. Last, but certainly not least, our Population Health Bureau, that does incredible work in the community through the minority health and tobacco and diabetes prevention programs, as well as providing critical data and planning support, including our emergency preparedness teams. So one of the other things we've been talking about is meaningful community engagement, and how can we strengthen our relationships with the community? So I want to highlight a few upcoming events and some recent efforts, including our upcoming IU We Matter Symposium. All young women, middle and high school age, are welcome to attend on Friday, November 21st, from 4:00 PM to 10:30 PM at the Ward Y in Abingdon. I've heard so many wonderful things about this event, and I hope that you will let the young women in your life know about it and encourage them to attend. I, for one, cannot wait. I'm really looking forward to it. I saw the video from last year. It looks fantastic and really a wonderful way to celebrate and support the young women in our lives. I also want to acknowledge that September was Recovery Month, and there were so many great events around the community to celebrate. I want to thank the council for issuing a proclamation to celebrate it. Our staff also celebrated by wearing purple, as you can see here. And our Director of the Local Addictions Authority, Sean Martin, did a great job presenting at the county's Symposium on Addiction and Recovery. We also held listening sessions related to the Rural Health Transformation Program. That's included in HR1, the one big beautiful bill act that was signed into law in July 2025. We held two listening sessions. Thank you to Councilmember Riley for inviting us to the Northern Hartford Community Advisory Board. We also held another session virtually through our Hartford County Local Health Improvement Coalition. I wanted to highlight a few of the lessons that we learned. We heard about the strengths in rural communities. People highlighted the partnerships between public health and health care, as well as challenges such as transportation, high cost of care, and challenges finding providers who will accept specific health insurance plan. There was also a lot of interest in terms of looking to the future in ways to bring more providers to the community and building systems that are more prevention-focused. Okay. One more item before we move on to our Oral Rabies Vaccine Presentation. Respiratory illness season is upon us, and I want to encourage everyone to talk with their providers or pharmacists about what vaccinations are recommended based on your age and health history. Flu shots are recommended for everyone ages six months and older. I've included here a table. It's a little difficult to see. I know the font is small. This is also on the Maryland Department of Health website, as well as the Hartford County Health Department website. But this provides a really nice overview of what the recommendations are based on your age and health history and the specific respiratory illness. So, I really, vaccine is broadly available in the community, and I encourage everyone to please take good care of themselves in this respiratory illness season. Okay, so I raced through that. Are there any questions before we move on to our Oral Rabies Vaccine Program?
Counsel, anyone with questions?
Okay, wonderful. All right, on to the main events. I would like to invite up Hannah Lux and Bonnie Harbin from our Environmental Health Bureau to talk about the Oral Rabies Vaccination Program.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bonnie Harbin. I'm the Program Supervisor for the Community Hygiene Program within the Bureau of Environmental Health. I've been with the Health Department for the past eight years.
And I'm Hannah Lux. I am a supervisor within community hygiene, and I have been with the Health Department for almost six years.
So tonight, we're going to be talking about our proposed Oral Rabies Vaccination Program. So this is something we're really looking forward to starting, hopefully, in the fall of 2026. So we'll go over a short introduction about the rabies virus. This may be a refresher to a lot of you. So what is rabies? Rabies is a viral disease that affects the nervous system of mammals. It's spread through the bites and scratches of an infected animal and is nearly always fatal when symptoms first occur. The main variant of the rabies virus in this area is the raccoon variant. But raccoons, skunks, foxes, bats, cats, all are main vectors and carriers of rabies in the state of Maryland.
So why do we want to start an ORB program? The first thing to take a look at when you're thinking about starting a program like this is our rabies data. So these two graphs show that the rabies test results, or they show the rabies test results for terrestrial animals in Hartford County, specifically terrestrial animals, those are all the animals that we test for rabies, except for bats, whose bats would not be affected by this program. So, on the left, we have a graph. It is showing, it's a little hard to see on the slideshow, but basically it's showing that while our negative test results are higher than our positive test results, we have had significantly higher test results in 2022, 2024, and 2025. And then on the right-hand side, we have a graph that's showing the percent positive of those terrestrial rabid animals. As you can see, that percent positive is increasing and has been increasing over the last ten years. And it's the highest this year so far than it has been any other year over the last ten years. Additionally, as that percent positive, or the number of positive test results that we've gotten each year, we have gotten more public interest in it, and more people have been commenting with their concerns and also asking for an ORB program.
So next, we want to talk about the cost of rabies. So approximately fifty-five thousand people each year receive rabies post-exposure prophylaxis. The cost of that is around $4,000 for each treatment. Not only that, but the first treatment is typically done in an emergency room setting, so you have the cost associated with that, as well as three additional follow-up visits to complete the series. With that, you have long waiting times as well, and then potential exposure to your pets. So you could have a rabid raccoon come onto your property, attack your pet. You have the vet visits, the stress coming with that, the potential loss of your pet, as well as pet quarantine. So we have to set up a quarantine for any animal that's been exposed to something that's come back positive for rabies. So that would be either a forty-five day for animals that have received a pre-exposure rabies shot, and any pet that has not received one would have to be a four-month double-caged strict quarantine. So that's something we're really trying to avoid.
The advantage that we have is that we have been able to show that an ORB program can be successful in Maryland. Anne Rundle County has been doing a program since 1997. So the graph on the left is showing you, they had their program from 1997 until 2011, at which point their program was suspended due to lack of funding. You can see that there was a pretty dramatic increase in positive animals after that point. The program was able to be restarted in 2014, and there was an equally dramatic decrease in the number of positive rabid animals after that time. On the right, the graph is showing the difference between Hartford County's percent positive and Anne Rundle County's percent positive. And as you can see, their percent positive is about half as much as what we have.
So what does a proposed ORB program look like for Hartford County next year? So this is a map that we created that shows our potential baiting areas. The areas in green are county-owned and state-owned parks and other properties that we would be able to have access to for treatment. The red stars on the map are our positive rabies cases from the past three years. And the blue areas around that are culverts and storm drains, which we would have access to within a half-mile radius of those positive cases. As you can see, we have quite a bit of positives off the Route 1 corridor, especially at the intersection of Forest Hill and Bel Air. So we're really going to be focusing on that Route 1 corridor, putting our extra baits throughout that corridor. So this is an example of what the rabies vaccination looks like, and John Resline has an example he'll pass around to you guys. It's been approved for USDA governmental use since 1997. Over two hundred million doses have been distributed throughout the U.S. It cannot cause rabies. It doesn't actually contain the rabies virus, just a part of it to stimulate an immune response. The way that we're going to be distributing these baits, we're really going to be systematically doing it to avoid any kind of exposure to people and their pets. If by some chance there is an exposure to that vaccine, there is an 877 number written on all of the vaccines. Reports are taken for all of the calls regarding bait contacts, and follow-ups are done for all bait contacts. This is especially for people who are immune-compromised, pregnant, or may have a chronic skin condition, as it could cause a rash. When it comes to your pets, the biggest issue with these baits would be gastrointestinal upset, because they're pretty fatty. They're made with a fishmeal polymer. So on the inside is the, the actual vaccine itself is in a little packet on the inside, and that's surrounded by the polymer, which is then surrounded by a very thick coating of fishmeal. So it's in a bag, just because it's a little smelly, but the bait's pretty well cut in there.
So we put together what we estimate possibly for this program. We think that we will be able to distribute about twelve thousand six hundred baits, which would cost about $20,000. And then we have around $8,000 in one-time costs. This would include things like the refrigeration units we would need to keep the baits, any signage that we would have, and then just general supplies for the baiting. And then finally, it would be about fifteen to $20,000 for professional consults. This would include somebody within the USDA Wildlife Services. We would contract them to come to trap and test the raccoons a few weeks after baiting to make sure that this program worked. And then we would also have a veterinary consult, just in case somebody calls after an animal has had contact with a bait and their questions are beyond what we can give, then we can direct owners to that vet consult. So in total, we think that it will be approximately forty-three to $48,000 for this program.
So that's what we're thinking of for next year. We are really grateful for Anne Rundle County for letting us come out and see what, how they run their program. They're currently running it right now, distributing baits throughout the county, and we're here for any questions that you might have.
So Bonnie, Hannah, thank you for your presentation. And I know the map shows positive rabies cases in Hartford County, but since the first of the year, how many have we had?
Twenty-three positives of terrestrial animals, twenty-four, because there was one bat that was positive.
Okay. And I noticed that we're getting more and more notifications via email, so thank you for your presentation. Counsel, Mr. Bennett?
How much is the cost as far as man-hours? Like, how time-intensive is it to run this program? Is it something that it's set it and forget it, or like, what do you expect that impact to be on your work?
Yeah, so this program, typically it takes just the unloading of the baits and then a couple of weeks of distribution. So it's a one-time distribution. So we're doing this in the fall, so that we're getting all of those young-of-the-year juvenile raccoons that are going out on their own to get food. So it will just be our division at this point, so that's about four of us, going out and distributing to the parks and around those positive cases.
And is it like a week? Like, how long do you think it will take to get them all out there?
Two or three weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's hard to know for sure. The benefit of our program is we are in the entirety, the three and four of us are in the entirety of the county every day. So we can take, you know, a couple hundred baits. We're in Forest Hill. We'll do a couple parks, and then we'll do our other G's. So we can kind of mix and match, you know, adding it on to when we're already in areas to kind of do that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bennett. Lauren, I wanted to ask you, one of the things that we talked about when we met here recently was partnerships or contacts for partners in the county. Are you receiving all the contacts that you need?
Absolutely. I've had many meetings coming up, and I was really internally focused for the first few weeks, and now expanding that focus to include community partners. I've met with a number of people already, but I have a lengthy list to get through.
Mr. Janjordano?
Good evening. Yep, I guess it is evening. Good evening. So of the rabies cases, you didn't break out what's cats, what's raccoons in it. Is there a breakout of that?
Yeah, so if you look inside your folder...
Oh, I did miss that, okay.
Yeah, so there's a 2025 map, and then there's the last three years as well.
Okay. And then is there any other counties other than Anne Rundle County doing this program? What are the other counties doing? I mean, obviously, they're doing nothing, but what are their numbers compared to our numbers, too?
Yeah, so at this point, we're the second highest in rabies positives this year. Frederick County is the highest, but they had determined last year, they had had to sit down with Anne Rundle County, and just they, with the size of their county and some limitations they have with terrain and things like that, it can be a little bit difficult for them to get a program started. Our county's smaller. We don't have as many of those limitations. You know, we wouldn't be doing...
Frederick County, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We wouldn't be doing the airdrops that Anne Rundle County does, or that Frederick County may have the ability to do. So ours would just be a smaller program in general.
And Cecil County, where are they, since they're our neighbor, where are they in the positives?
They're lower than us, I think, pretty significantly.
Single digits, yeah.
So is it based on, Pat was just saying, population is because of their population density?
Yeah, so basically, where you're seeing these positives is where people and animals meet. So we, most of these positives are, like I said, in Bel Air, Forest Hill. So that's where we're having a lot of people with their pets outside. You know, a raccoon wanders into the yard, and then that's where we're having that.
And I was, and I always heard that it was a set, years ago, maybe that's changed, it was a seven-shot series. Is that now down to the four-shot series?
Correct.
Is it still as painful as the seven-shot?
I mean, we've had our pre-exposure vaccines, so we had three, back when it was three for pre-exposure, and it's just a simple...
Now what does that do, pre-exposure? What does that mean? If you're, if you come in contact with a rabid vehicle, you're not going to, rabid vehicle, you're not going to get it?
We wouldn't need as many post-exposure shots, so we would only need two follow-ups, and we wouldn't need the immunoglobulin that they provide for initial vaccine, which is actually the most expensive part.
And we've never had this program, but our numbers keep going up significantly, and this would help reduce those numbers significantly based on your estimates, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Ms. Imhoff?
Good evening. For, so for those, for anyone in the audience who's never seen one, it's like the density of a hard dog treat. So since you guys, I'd rather not. I didn't even want to smell it. So when you put it in like the drain culverts, what happens to it when it's exposed to rainwater? Like, will it dissolve?
So it will start to, you know, dissolve a little bit. So the vaccine itself is in a packet, and then that's covered in wax, and then that's covered in fishmeal. So the fishmeal will start to dissolve a little. The benefit to that is that that means younger raccoons will have an easier time if they do come in contact with that packet and eating the vaccine. But it will take, you know, a few days. The research from the company that makes these say that most of the vaccine baits are gone within four days. Or, most of them are eaten within four days, gone within a week, and then anything left over, it's going to disintegrate with the weather. And then, once the vaccine is exposed to the elements, it's deactivated.
And the pack kind of looks like one of those like fresh packs that you have to throw away, so like small children don't eat it. It's obviously dissolvable. It's made from digestible materials, or...
It is a plastic material, but Anne Rundle County has not seen any like plastic waste from it. So I guess it is digestible.
To a certain extent.
It breaks down pretty quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, I know you said that this is a one-time distribution. If successful, would you all want to do it on a yearly basis, every five years? What's the plan?
Yearly would be our plan. You really have to do it yearly to see any long-term results. As that graph from Anne Rundle County showed, as soon as their program stopped, their numbers went back up again. So we would hope that, you know, we can be successful this year, and then we can potentially even expand in the coming years to cover more broadly the county and, you know, really help decrease our numbers.
And I know you said that it shouldn't have any major long-term effects on any household pets that would eat it. Is there any effect of dogs or cats that have already been vaccinated or not vaccinated, or anything like that, like...
So it doesn't replace the yearly or every three-year vaccine that your pet would receive. It's not produced for pets. It's produced for the raccoons. And like I said before, the only real effect on them would be that it would cause an upset stomach. It would probably be worse to try to pull it out of its mouth and potentially get bitten by your own pet than to let them just eat it.
Fair. Okay, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Imhoff. The subs?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. That's very interesting information. Are there any grant opportunities available for this?
So we don't have anything specifically at this point. However, when we have gone to Anne Rundle County to see their program and we've talked to their USDA Wildlife Services person, there have been some indications that it's possible. But nothing is guaranteed yet.
They might want to use this as like a novel testing area, but it kind of depends on USDA and their budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Would it be appropriate to ask a General Health Department question at this time?
I would think you could ask Ms. Levy anything.
I know we had the Safe Gun Storage Giveaway earlier this year. I've had a few constituents reach out to me since and ask if there's a plan to have another. I was just curious if there is any hope of replicating that. Or my other thought was having just like passive programming, where maybe there would be available supplies at the Health Department or at the different sheriff's offices for anybody who's interested to pick one up.
So we don't have plans for a similar event just yet. We have been having discussion about how we're going to follow up on that. Obviously firearm safety is something we hear a whole lot about and want to make sure that we're getting those safety supplies out to the community as much as possible. So stay tuned. I don't have specifics just yet, but the State Center for Firearms Safety is putting a number of funding opportunities out, and I think we will likely be taking advantage of the next one and supporting some of that work. But yes, more to come, but I don't have specifics just yet.
That'd be great, because I know it sold out, like, within a day. It was filled up. And it was so encouraging to see car after car after car coming for pickup. I thought that was really great. And I know in the past, there's been the ask for any council member who'd be able to come to the IU We Matter Youth Symposium to come and visit. I would just encourage my council colleagues, I know Ms. Imhoff and I were talking about it over the weekend. I think it's such a rare and special moment where we have three women serving on the county council, to have powerful women in front of young women to encourage them to do cool things. So I hope they're able to make it out and to be a part of that.
Absolutely. Like I said, I'm super excited, so really looking forward to it. And of course, everyone is welcome. You beat me to the punch a little bit. I was going to reach out to you all after this. We would love to have a video from council. Perhaps welcoming everybody to the symposium would be really wonderful, so we'll follow up with you to maybe try to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I can't imagine a Health Department update without saying hello to Mr. Resline. He always sits off to the side, so nobody notices him. But John, I just want to take a minute and thank you again for all of your help with the many calls that we get and place in your office, and you seem to always handle them with quickness and ease, and I appreciate it very much. Counsel, anything else before we end this public hearing?
So John's not going to come sit up on the hot seat?
No. Unless you want him to.
We may need to get him to pass the vaccine rounds.
I'll get with him later.
Okay, all right. And then one last question. I know that when Marcy has been here in the past, we talked about many of the other programs that we have throughout the Health Department. Are they all our youth programs, our dental programs, everything up and running well?
For the moment, yes, everything. Obviously, the fiscal outlook is uncertain, you know, but wanting to make sure that we are prioritizing the services that are so important to the community. So, you know, looking very carefully at our financial support. Obviously incredibly grateful for the investment that the county makes in the Health Department, and we are, take our role as stewards of those funds very seriously. So for the moment, we are status quo, and I'm grateful for that.
So I look forward to future meetings, and maybe you can update us on other things as the year goes on. So, but thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for your update. And the council, we have another piece of business here, Board of Health appointments. Mr. Bennett?
Council President, I move to approve the appointments of Bernard Henigan and Paige Dillon to the Office of Mental Health Core Services Agency of Hartford County.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Janjordano? They move in a second to approve the new appointments. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsaddle?
Abstein.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, one abstention, the appointments are hereby approved.
They're here. Guest are not here.
I know Mr. Henigan's not here. I know him, so, okay. This will move on. This will conclude, I guess. Hello. Do you have any questions for Ms. Levy?
No, I read everything. I'm fine, thank you.
Well, that'll conclude your health updates, so thank you very much. And we're going to move, no, we're not. Yes, we're not. And, uh, we're gonna move, no we're not, yes we are, we're gonna move right into a public hearing, so thank you all. We're gonna call to order a public hearing for Bill twenty-five dash zero zero nine, uh, Chapter two sixty-eight of the Harford County Code, Section two sixty-eight, twenty-one A, Final Platte, Article five, Ms. Bull Sodell.
Thank you, Council President. An issue was brought to my attention regarding submittal of plats and the requirements in the subdivision regulations. The current subdivision regulation, Section two sixty-eight dash twenty-one, only allows plats that are twenty-four by twenty inches in size to be submitted to planning and zoning for review. Recently, more notes are being required to be added to the plats, which take up more space on the plats and are not being permitted to utilize and submit larger-sized plats. The bill simply allows plats up to twenty-four by thirty-six inches in size to be submitted to planning and zoning for review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodell. Um, council, anyone with any questions? I know you all have met with Ms. Sodell. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Alright, with, uh, no one signed up, then this will conclude this public hearing for Bill twenty-five dash zero zero nine and we'll move at a future meeting. Uh, Bill twenty-five zero ten, Police Accountability Board, uh, Mr. Ladonna. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Just to reintroduce myself, my name's Anthony Ladonna, I'm with the Harford County Law Department, I'm Assistant County Attorney. Uh, to provide some background on Bill twenty-five dash ten, the Maryland General Assembly passed the Police Accountability and Disciplinary Act, uh, which became effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, which required the county to establish both a police accountability board and an administrative charging committee to oversee complaints made against law enforcement officers involving members of the public. The administrative charging committee is tasked with reviewing the complaints, the investigations pertaining to the complaints, determine if there is a violation of law or policy, and recommending disciplinary action to the law enforcement chief. The police accountability board, which serves more of an oversight role, uh, reviews trends and disciplinary outcomes as well as makes recommendations on policy. When the Police Accountability and Disciplinary Act was passed, it granted the local government body the authority to oversee the police accountability board. This includes, uh, nominating members and establishing the budget for the police accountability board, among other things. When Harford County passed its initial, uh, legislation, it interpreted a local government body to mean both the county executive and county council. Subsequent to the enactment of the county law, uh, the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission defined the term local government body to mean just county council, which led county council to amend its legislation to align with this new definition. Earlier this year, the commission amended COMAR to redefine a local government body to mean, for purposes of Harford County, the county executive and county council. So Bill twenty-five dash ten restores this shared authority over the police accountability board to both the county executive and county council, consistent with the new amendment. And I'm willing to take any questions.
So basically, the county executive appoints and the council confirms?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, council, any questions? Ms. Emhoff?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so, prior to my appointment to the county council, I was, uh, appointed to the PAB. And during that time period, I did see transitions from under the county executive to the county council. One of the concerns that had come up was because these are high, um, emotion, um, stakes that these two boards are reviewing, was, um, while there are public meetings, safety. Um, and so, is there any assurance that these meetings will still be held in somewhat secure locations?
Yeah, so the meetings for the police accountability board will be held at, uh, two-twenty Main Street and there will be chair deputies there, just like they're, just like they're there every day. And they would just be working at the time of the meetings as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Um, could you clarify for me something that you just said, uh, in regards to, when they clarified the language in Annapolis, you said, I believe like in the context to Harford County or specific to Harford County? Was it Harford County singularly or all counties that have county executives?
Charter counties with both county executive and county.
Okay, that's why I was just double checking.
Yeah.
It wasn't like, and they were saying, "And in Harford County."
No, 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 no. I was just saying generally.
Okay. Um, and then my other question was, I know we've talked about this before in the past and it's not directly pertaining to this bill, but for people who are going through the process of having a flow chart of what to expect step by step when submitting, uh, a complaint or concern, just for somebody to look at a glance and know what to expect when going through.
Right, so, um, what the law requires is, so essentially how it works is a complaint's filed with the police accountability board, which is then forwarded to the relevant law enforcement agencies. The law requires each law enforcement agency to, uh, appoint someone to be a representative for the plaintiffs. And it also requires that the law enforcement agencies have, uh, some type of software in place. Sorry, I'm not, I don't know the exact terminology used in the legislation, but it requires like some software in place where a complainant can, uh, stay informed of where their complaint is throughout the process.
Yeah, I was just thinking it'd be nice, like, as a flyer.
Like a flow chart that's just like available for?
Well, just like a flyer to know, here's the process from?
Yeah, that, that is definitely something that we can provide. I actually think the state actually has, uh, kind of like an outline or a flow chart, as you said.
Yeah.
That provides, so, so, yeah, that's something we could definitely provide too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Ladonna. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Alright, well, thank you. This will conclude this public hearing for Bill twenty-five dash zero ten and we will take this up at a future meeting. And we will take a recess for twenty-four minutes. Good evening, Chair, calls to order legislative session day twenty-five dash zero twenty-six. I would ask you to please stand for the pledge, followed by opening prayer by Councilwoman Bull Sodell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. Grant this council wisdom, patience, and clarity as we make decisions that impact the people of Harford County. Help us to listen with respect, speak with kindness, and act with integrity. Bless all who have gathered here, those who serve, those who lead, and those who call Harford County home. May our work tonight reflect your guidance and bring forth unity, progress, and peace. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Agenda number four, Presentation of Proclamations, we have none. Five, consideration petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations, executive appointments, Harford Center, Mr. Bennett.
Council President, I move to approve the reappointment of Kristen Klein as Chair of the Harford Center Board of Directors.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's been moved a second to approve, um, Kristen Klein as Chair of the Harford Center Board. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Harford County Public Library Board of Trustees, Ms. Emhoff.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Thomas Cusick as a member of the Harford County Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's been moved a second to approve, Mr. Cusick, uh, to the Harford County Public Library Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Em, Mrs., Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Advisory Board on Aging, Mr. Jan Giordano.
May I have a motion for the reappointment of Tammy Fitzgerald?
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved a second to approve, Ms. Fitzgerald, to the Advisory Board on Aging. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mr., Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the reappointment is hereby approved. Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, Mr. Jan Giordano.
Council President, I move to approve the reappointments of Kathleen Ward and David Pickett.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved a second to approve, Ms. Ward and Mr. Pickett. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the reappointments are hereby approved. Are any of these individuals in the audience this evening? Alright, thank you. Six special presentations, we have none, seven approval of minutes, public hearing October seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Legislative Day twenty-five dash zero twenty-five, October seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution zero fourteen twenty-five, Master Water and Sewer Plan, update fall, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Jan Giordano.
Council President, I move to approve the Master Water and Sewer Update Fall, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Been moved a second to approve, Resolution zero fourteen twenty-five, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-five is hereby approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Resolution zero three four twenty-five into the record for introduction, please.
Resolution zero three four dash twenty-five, Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation Project, as introduced, introduced by Councilmember Emhoff. A resolution of the County Council of Harford County to encourage Baltimore Gas and Electric Company, BG&E, to use all of its efforts to minimize the impacts of the Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation Project, Retirement Mitigation Project, on affected communities, neighborhoods, and properties in Harford County to resolve all land title issues before beginning any work on a retirement mitigation project, to work with property owners if their properties are adversely affected by the project and provide proper compensation thereto to bury the transmission lines where possible and feasible and to utilize the existing footprint and limit or prevent any change in the scope of the project.
Thank you. Ms. Emhoff, you wanna speak to it?
Yes. I'm bringing forward Resolution zero three four dash twenty-five tonight, which urges Baltimore Gas and Electric to do everything possible to minimize the impacts of the Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation Project on our communities. This project directly affects the Falston area within District B. The resolution asks BG&E to work closely with property owners to resolve all land and title issues before consideration, before construction, provide fair compensation where impacts occur and bury transmission lines wherever it's feasible. Just as importantly, it calls to BG&E to stay within its existing footprint and avoid unnecessary expansion of the project. My goal is to make sure that this, this infrastructure improvements are done responsibly, protecting the character, safety, and quality of life of our residents while keeping power reliable for the region. I respectfully ask the council's support of Resolution zero three four dash two five.
Thank you, Ms. Emhoff. Um, due to the nature of this resolution, we will move on this this evening, so may I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution zero thirty-four dash twenty-five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Emhoff. So it's been moved a second to, uh, approve this resolution. So, Ms. Emhoff, is there any other discussion that you?
I would like to share, I drive under these power lines every day. I saw the changes that occurred in two thousand twenty. Um, I understand that everybody likes to be able to turn on a light and have their AC and their heat running. We understand that the need for progress, but we just wanna make sure that it's not at the cost of strong-arming our property owners or stepping on our farmers.
Thank you, anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
Um, I just wanted to say kudos to Ms. Emhoff for getting this together so quickly in the past week. I know, uh, drafting and preparing a resolution is not easy work, but, um, you're very responsive to the community and what they asked of us, um, and I fully support this resolution. Uh, it'd be one thing if these were power lines to power our homes and our neighborhoods and our communities, but we know much of this is to be shipped off to Virginia data centers. At some point, we have to say, what are we doing to use a responsible amount of energy rather than tearing up available homeland for, for power lines?
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Um, so, I, I also see that, uh, these power lines have been added, uh, subsequently since the thirties and the seventies and, and moving far, far forward. But I think the bottom line also is, is that we're losing some of our, uh, power generating plants that were coal, maybe not have converted into natural gas, where we, we need to have our own power sources other than nuclear in Maryland so that we don't wind up in this problem. I, I know we've, a couple of us have toured up north, up in, uh, Cecil County, their power generation plant there and all that power goes down to Virginia, except for one thing that goes to, to Delaware, so, um, it looks like there's a, needs to be a long-term solution. Hopefully, you know, they, everybody looks at what's going on and we, we could start putting online some, uh, power generation facilities, um, that can help down the road so we don't wind up in blackouts. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Anyone else? Ms. Rob?
Yes, I just wanna echo, uh, my colleagues, but also, um, when members of the community spoke last week, they also spoke a lot about the health concerns surrounding the power lines and I think we need to take that into consideration. Um, there was a lot of research done and a lot mentioned to leukemia. And so, you know, if it can be underground versus over, but I agree, having too much can be, um, a big cause of health concerns for our community as well, so I just wanna note that.
Thank you. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Ms. Allegi for her help with this resolution, but also wanna recognize that over the past two or three days, we've all, we've also had conversations with our BG&E representative, which, uh, Chanel is here with us this evening, so, um, they were aware of the resolution. They gave some input, uh, some we listened to, some we did not. Um, but, we keep open channels with them all the time, so, uh, appreciate it. We just, um, we know that you will do the best that you can do, but we just wanna make sure that you consider the property owners as you go through, that's all. Last call. Ms. Dixon?
Uh?
Excuse me.
Council President, I move to approve the resolution.
You already did it.
Oh, okay. Anybody second?
Yes, we did.
Yes, that's why you were discussing.
Yeah.
We're gonna pass it twice and send two copies.
I'm good, okay, just checking. Ms. Dixon? Call roll.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Resolution zero thirty-four twenty-five is hereby approved. Nine, introduction of bills, we have none. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills, none. Twelve, enrollment of bills, none. Thirteen unfinished bills or unfinished business, none. Fourteen, new business, none. Seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Thank you. Sixteen, business from council members. Ms. Sodell.
Thank you, Council President. Thursday, October sixteenth, at six-thirty, is the Churchville Crestwell Fountain, Green, Dublin, Darlington Community Advisory Board Meeting, and it will be held at the Churchville Rec Center. And this Saturday, October eighteenth, families in Harford County can enjoy the first trunk-or-treat at the movies at Flagship Cinemas from ten AM to one PM. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Hello, good evening, uh, good to be with everybody. Um, very short comments this week, just wanted to share, I attended the Spooky Soiree, uh, which is annual fundraiser for the Harford Center. This was the tenth annual fundraiser for the Harford Center. For those of you who don't know what the Harford Center is, it helps, uh, support, uh, those in our community of developmental. in our community of developmental disabilities, to make sure that they have the ability to have meaningful access within the community and in their lives. It is a door-to-door program that picks up and drops off every day, and does so much. It was so heartening to see participants at the fundraiser, and to see them on the dance floor with the workers at the Hartford Center. It's just, it's important to recognize and support those in our community with developmental disabilities, so that they can live a meaningful and happy and fulfilling life, just like we all want. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Roberts?
Good evening. I'm, I have short things as well. I just wanted to say, I, what I have attended was pretty much Friday, October tenth. A few of us did the Klein Shop Right Celebrity Grocery. It was great to see Klein donate ninety thousand dollars to the Maryland Food Bank, and I thought it was fun bagging groceries.
But you bagged them with me.
I know, I bagged them, yes.
I swished the bread.
Anyway, I met with a local New Comcast individual who is trying to see how she can help with initiatives in our community, and I've met with Jillian Miller with the Hartford Center to discuss transportation, the difficulties for our disabled, as well as, this was a conversation that came up at a cab meeting as well, so I'm going to have communications with transportation this week, in order to, to see what, what we can do to help those on the weekend. Transportation stops a lot on the weekend, there's not much access to it, and so, trying to see how we can improve that. I know there are some things going on from some of the discussions I had, which I'm looking forward to them starting sooner than later. And then I went on Saturday to the Barbecue Bash, dropped by there for a little bit, then went to the Copley Parish Fall Festival, which was interesting, to see them dress up in colonial times and cook peanuts and boil them and things like that, and then I ended with the Music at the Point, which was very nicely done by Seven-Five-Five Alliance. This week, we have magnet open house schedule. Majority of the schools are in District A, and that's to have children or teens look at the other various programs that are out, that, that, out there that they can participate in, such as the Training Corps, ROTC, TOON, Academy of Finance, and the Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness Specialties. So that is all this week, starting tomorrow, Wednesday, October fifteenth, and it goes on to Wednesday, November fifth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Ms. Emhoff?
Good evening. On October ninth, I was able to attend Hartford's Most Beautiful People Awards, where we got to honor some of the most remarkable people in our community who constantly give and ensure that our communities are safe and clean. On October tenth, I was able to attend the Klein's Forest Hill Maryland Food Bank program. It was really fun. My first job was working in a grocery store, so I very much enjoyed that. That evening, I attended the Faith in Blue Hartford County Sheriff's Office trunk-or-treat. On October fifteenth, thirteen, I attended the Hartford County Public Schools Family Life Citizens Advisory Committee. This morning, I was able to attend the Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation evidentiary hearings. Tomorrow is day two, and they hope to conclude the hearings after tomorrow. Just as a reminder, there's only a few more weeks left of the Fallston Volunteer Fire Company Food Truck Thursdays. They end at the end of October, I believe October thirtieth is the last day that they do it. If you haven't been, it's a really good time. Also, just a reminder, the Ladue Garden Glow is October, starts October seventeenth. I'm not sure if the tickets are sold out, but highly, oh, I'm getting ahead now that they are sold out, I'm sorry, but keep it on your calendars for next year. Side note, if you are a annual member, you get first dibs on the ticket, so just putting that plug out there. Also, Hartford Women's Commission is doing a women's self-defense training on October twenty-seventh at the McFaul, McFaul Community Center. Check the Women's Commission Facebook page for more information. And October twenty-ninth is the Fallston Cab Meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Emhoff. Mr. Jan Gredano?
Thank you, Counsel President. So I also attended Hartford's Most Beautiful Awards with my other colleagues, so they mentioned all that. Also attended the Shop Right Hundred Year Anniversary, where we were celebrity baggers, and myself and Councilwoman Roberts, we, we teamed up, and I would pull them in from the island and bring them in, and she would ring them up, so we, we worked together as a team for that. So, it's always a lot of fun, and I, I try to make it more fun anyway, but ninety thousand dollars, I think that's the, that's the big thing they gave to the Maryland Food Bank, and if I remember right, it's nine grand per store, so congratulations to them. And I want to talk about the release of the hostages, these Israeli hostages, so I'm thankful that they got the twenty people back. I wish the rest of the people get returned back, the deceased people, so that things can move forward and it gets rebuilt, and there's lasting peace in that area, so congratulations to getting them back. November eleventh is the Veterans' Fair at the Armory in Bel Air, so if you know a veteran, let them know about it. Farmer's Market's still going on in Bel Air, so it's probably one of the busiest Saturdays. There's, there's everything over there that you can think of, all kind of food, stuff to eat, honey, they sell all kind of things, so if you haven't been there, get a chance, go. It's great to buy local, a lot of, support the farms, a lot of people there, and then also, we had the Barbecue Bash this past weekend, Friday and Saturday, it rained a little bit one day, but I think it, it still was okay, and I think that's it, just, you know, buy equal, buy local, shop local, eat local. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Gredano. Mr. Riley? Mr. Riley's good.
I do all three.
Well, there's a lot of truth to that. I mean, all of us go to a lot of the same events, and when we, when we give our update for the past week, there's a lot of duplication, and tonight is absolutely no different. I do want to mention, we attended the Mannheim Fall Festival event, Fall Harvest Event. When you talk about Hartford's Most Beautiful People, a lot of great people received awards, but I do want to point out Karen Lopes from Level Volunteer Fire Company, she received the First Responder Award for her fifty years of service. Fifty years, and, and they actually talked about her at one point riding on the tailgate of the fire truck, a fireman, so congratulations to her. I also want to point out the Bel Air Lions Club, they received a group award, and the very next day, they were at the Barbecue Bash volunteering and working there, so, and I could go on, yes.
Didn't that lady also drive the fire truck?
Karen, I don't know if she was a driver or not, but she rode on the tailgate. I don't think she was, yeah. And then, again, just so many different ones, Terry Murphy from up at Jerrisville Fire Company, Bangtan Miller from down at Seven-Five-Five, Amy Miller from the farm there on one-fifty-five, gosh, Christine Deckard, I mean, I could just go on, so a lot of great people recognized and deserving. You talked about the Sheriff's Office trunk-or-treat, it was amazing, so many kids having a great time, we tried to do it every year, to stop by and check them out, so Barbecue Bash, went to that. Party to Preserve, this past Saturday night, I was invited to a Party to Preserve on the Eastern Shore, for the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy, and it was probably the largest event they ever had, over three hundred people. I don't want to quote the amount of money that was raised, but it was a lot, just a great event. And then, also, Level Volunteer Fire Company had their annual bull roast, so as you can see, there's just so many things going on throughout the county. But I want to finish up with what I believe is a serious thing, and over the past couple of days, we've heard from several citizens concerned about some of the things that they've seen on social media, and we always say that public safety remains a top priority for the council and for the county, so I, I would like to take an opportunity to invite the sheriff and the administration to come here and give an update on the command center, the command, mobile command center, to kind of let citizens understand that our response is the same as it always is. We want to do the best we can for our citizens each and every day, and right now, they're confused, so I would appreciate, extend the opportunity to a future meeting, I'd be more than glad to do that, I'll set that up through my office, and have them come here and give us an update. So with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.